Sometimes it depends on the company.
Well, your Benton City Council meeting on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty five. We'll begin with a roll call.
Councilwoman Wadsworth.
Here.
Councilman Sandretto.
Here.
Councilman Reed.
Here.
Councilwoman Alkisar.
Here.
Councilman Valencia.
Let's start the pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, buddy.
Thank you, Bill. Are there any questions or decisions on the consent agenda?
I move to approve February eighteenth, twenty twenty five consent agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Reed, I.
Alkisar, I.
Motion passes. Any questions on the agenda items that need to be added?
Moved to, moved to approve the agenda as written?
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Reed, I.
Alkisar, I.
No clock commissions or acknowledgements tonight. Do we have any visitors comments to be made besides Shane? Okay, well Shane will turn the time over to you for a few minutes.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
You. Last time I was here, we talked about a drill that was coming. Here, let me put up my little display. This week or two Saturdays ago, we actually had our emergency drill using solely our radios. It was definitely a proof and concept. The weather gave us a kind of real world event where the radios locally were able to talk to each other well, but we didn't quite get the steak online, which if you don't know what a steak is, it's a organization that covers eight to twelve congregations. So let me get to my notes now. We conducted it purely with GMSR radios. We were able to talk radio to radio to everyone in this areas that we had kind of spot, spotting reception, we were able to relay. So basically it is a effective means of communication when the cell towers and power is down. The other things that we found out was that the community was overall very receptive. We actually had homes where our members weren't at. Oh, let me time out here. Anything I say does not represent the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints, or its acting bodies, blah, 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 blah. Anything you're hearing from me is my opinion and my observation. So we have that all official. And I retroacted that two weeks. But the community members, we went to homes where member, church members had moved on. And the actual community members was, were excited and very appreciative that we were coming out. And, you know, caring about the community, we offered a emergency management preparedness manual at every door we stopped at, which I think is helpful. In fact, that's one of the ideas I wouldn't mind asking at the end of this. Let's see here. Improvements that we saw is that the store, snowstorm did knock out our initial regional communication just due to ice and fog, but we were able to switch to ham radios and make that happen. Church level wise for our church, and I think that this could be expanded, we were able to relay the information of needs and solving of problems of the entire West Richland area and Benton City area in three hours. We had contact with everybody in three hours and up, relayed out. Let's see, any other things? That would be it. The reason why I feel it's relevant to the city knowing about this and the potential that it offers is that FEMA's federal government is reevaluating their priorities and FEMA is not looking like it's the top of their priority, which means that local levels are going to have to be more reliant on themselves. Whether you like it or not, I think, I, I think that's something that communities need to start considering. The aspect of this, I think, kind of, we're moving back to the old World War Two civilian defense watches where the community actually looks out for each other and looks out for these types of situations. If there's a disaster, having the community involved, relaying information would definitely improve how to organize resources from the city, the fire department, the police department. And having a body of people that will go out and check on doors and find out that I think is a, a major positive for the community. Uh, let's see. So personal things that I have from this event and thoughts after it that I would like ask or have considered is I think through the school district, if there was a way that the fire department city and the school district could organize to distribute preparedness manuals. I think that that would be a very positive thing. Those manuals from emergency management provides what kind of things to have packed in a bag, what kind of documents, things of that nature. So at that simple level, I think that if you there is a way to organize it so that you could get those manuals distributed. I know that the city, uh, school has like put things in your backpack to take home, that might be a way of distributing it effectively. The other thing is, is and I, I asked this question, I don't know if there is a city fire police type commission that, or board that gets together and makes plans for emergencies. But if there isn't, I think there should be. Number two, I would love to have the churches communication a part of that and maybe dip into faith council. I don't know its current status, but more of the
It's still active.
So have maybe a representative from there so you can relay it out to other church members for, uh, or the various churches to be involved. I think that this, what the Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints is doing is something that can be easily expanded to our kind of community. And the last little jab at how I think this is important in ninety six, didn't we lose the bridge?
We couldn't go over it, no.
You couldn't or you could.
Could not.
So that really reduces our ability to bring resources in. And a part of this communication project we did was figuring out how to solve problems. And if we could solve it locally, like we did have a person that was on Abbey and First that, I mean, that's, if there's going to be a flood, it's going to be right there. And so we went knocked on the door and figured out how could we effectively get this individual out of his trailer because quite frankly, he has no legs and needed that type of additional assistance. We had a individual with a dog that needed to go with them, but we needed to figure out that resources. We had a person that had a tree down on their property and on their house and finding out how to do those resources. Well, in that communication, we were able to find somebody with chainsaws. We were able to find somebody with a boat. We were able to find somebody that could bring a kennel or bring a know what the word is now, the boxer dog.
Yeah, yeah.
So in, I think this is something that could be happened at a a community wide event where the fire department can then allocate resources elsewhere, where the police department could allocate resources elsewhere.
So I, I suppose Bill can probably speak better to this than I can, but emergency management has an entire plan for the county with several layers to it in the event, depending on the emergency and the scale, including food drop locations and all that sort of stuff. And I believe in the later tiers, there is a contingency for getting together with ham radio operators and and that would be the place that this would fit in, I think, in that particular plan. Now, as far as the FEMA and where that's sitting, regardless of which, all the fire departments and most of the police departments that I'm aware of, as well as emergency management and them are all NIMS qualified under the seven, eight hundreds and are supposed to have interoperability with radios. The problem is when it comes back to yours, yours are going to be a lot lower bandwidth.
Right.
And in the UHF, I'm sure.
UHF, the hams are VHF.
Right. And, and we're running under the emergency system, seven hundred megahertz. So that's outside the bands that you're probably in as well. However, if you were to talk to emergency management, you could probably let them know what your bandwidth is, where you're at and if, because they have portable repeaters that they can tie the frequencies together.
Right.
The city also should have seven hundred megahertz radio, correct? They used to have one.
I can see where it went.
That they should be able to get ahold of the emergency management system.
I am, first off, emergency management, is that handling strictly Benton Franklin County?
Um, it's actually Benton County Emergency Management.
Okay, Benton County. I wasn't sure what tier they were in that. That's good to know. And we've had, been having conversations with them on as far as, hey, this is what we're looking at doing. This is what's going on. Uh, just as added information, this isn't a West Richland congregational level. This is happening in uh, the rest of the tri cities. There's developing the same radio commu- uh, communication. Uh, the pilot came out of Spokane and they're about three, four years ahead of us. And they've got it down to a nice
Sure.
type, you know, matured program. And I guess ultimately I feel that if we could, if it's emergency management level, which is above us, could tie into that and figure out a way to better integrate it would be great. And I also think that at city level, would it be something that would be a good value or good thing to be, even if you have, you know, somebody like me that tries to sit down and shut up. I know that for me, I'm a gabber, so that might not always be effective, but somebody from an org- a civilian side that could develop a civilian kind of core for that.
Yeah. There's another group around too. There's a civilian based disaster program set that I haven't heard a lot about anymore recently in the last few years, but that's COAD.
They're still on the Benton County Emergency Management website.
Are they? So you might reach out to them and talk to them about how you can integrate it as well.
Okay.
Um, I think it would be appropriate to have it in the tiers, uh, the emergency management system. As far as the city, that's up to the mayor if he wants to try and work with that particular piece.
Okay.
But yeah, it, it's a good opportunity. Uh, there's in my opinion, it's always good to have redundancies. So.
Oh, I agree. And we learned a lot about that as we had to relay around, uh, is it Candy Mountain or whatever is over there, relay around because, you know, our larger repeaters were down.
Was Prosser in on that too?
Yes.
Grandview? Okay.
Prosser, um, all of West Richland and the other cities and the stakes within those cities will be having them soon. There is going to be another drill sometime at the end of this year that will help, will have hopefully a little more maturity in it. I mean, for us right now, it was, we did three little zones just to prove it could be done. And like I said, the results, well, there's no real failure in this because we had, it was the first time out. It was like, okay, we're taking this from paper to actual real life.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
I'll harass Bill later. Well, I should ask as a kind, I don't know how you represent the fire department, but is this something you think the fire, uh, or should know about?
Could possibly. I don't know exactly, but so they kind of fall under the Benton County Emergency Management protocols. So they might have something and I think the, the best thing we could do is try and figure out what's the difference between what you have to offer, what we already have and see if there's some kind of common link between the two or three. Like the, the school, the city, the fire department, because if something happens. The good part about it at this point, I know all the coordination between the county and emergency management is there, so.
Okay. Just as a matter of organization, we do have a person who, I guess I'm learning all these words, a net controller so that there's a, a, a single point where this information is being gathered that can be relayed as opposed to, you know, twenty, thirty people trying to all talk to these different, uh, resources. There's a single body with a redundancy of a, if that person's not available, somebody else can step in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like a good job, Todd. As.
Uh, staff reports, uh, business licenses are in the packet. There's a, um, an application reference, like latest history new from the state liquor, it could full panelist board. Uh, code enforcement is handed out ahead of time. We have a brief planner's report. It's in the back of, do you want to go over that, George, or?
I can go over it and answer any questions if anybody has any. Good evening, Mayor Burton, members of the council. Uh, this is a, the planners report for February as prepared, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty five. Um, we have a couple of short plaid applications. One on twelve ten Grace Court. Uh, they want to create three new lots there. Uh, there's one on eleven oh seven thirteenth street. It's another short plot. They're looking to develop two lots. And this is kind of interesting. This is an old, old subdivision that's been here for a number of years. And the lots were undersized when they, um, divided them into two. And in this particular case, when they first bought this property, they had a lot line adjustment where they just had one lot instead of two. Now they want to divide it again. So, uh, we're taking a look at this. This is going to re- require a variance because the lot size is, um, under the seventy-two hundred square feet that's required in R two. Um, we have, uh, an item, it's on tonight too, and that's Cameo. Uh, Vista subdivision, and this is the creation of thirteen lots. And this is off Chris Avenue and Fourteenth Street. We're still looking at the forty-six lot preliminary plat subdivision off Babs. There are some conditions, uh, that came forward through the SEPA process. One is for potential cultural significance locations there. And we were informed by the, um, tribe that there may be these locations, so they're going to have to address that as well as some other historical buildings or foundations out there too, that the state has made comment on. Uh, we have a zone change application which is the, uh, off of Highland Road. And they're going from R three to C one, which is commercial. Uh, approximately an acre, point, one point two acres in size. They want to construct a brew pub there. Uh, one time the property across the street was zoned all C one. And that is a part of the old Olson Brothers subdivision. Uh, it's still commercial on the comprehensive plan, so we're going to have to take a look at that a little further if we can do that zone change without um, running into the state law about rezoning properties that have the, that are in an island. But there's a possibility, uh, come this June, where once a year that the city can um, amend the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance to allow for some of those locations for rezones. Uh, working with the county, uh, and the State Growth Management Act on their policies. Another item here that's come up is, um, Department of Ecology's twenty-five, twenty-seven Flood Control Assistance Account Program. And this is not FEMA dollars, but this is a state Department of Ecology grant. And it's, the purpose is to develop a new comprehensive flood hazard management plan which we do not have. And, uh, we are looking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant and this, um, project would start next year, but they're taking applications now. So those are the projects in summary.
So I see a vacation of right of way.
That's an item coming up.
Okay.
Thank you. Nathan, you wanted to talk about public works, staff report?
Provide a brief update. First of all, I know we had talked at the last council meeting about scheduling a workshop. Um, I was thinking the week of April twenty first would be a good time to conduct a walkthrough of all of our facilities and show you guys what we've got. Weather should be good enough by then, or if we're there around six, six-thirty, we'll have daylight and should have decent weather. Does anybody have any issues with that week or have a preference for a day of the week, a Monday, a Tuesday? Too far out?
Twenty-first?
Yes.
And what day of the week is the twenty-first?
Twenty-fourth, well, the week of the twenty-first, twenty-first is a Monday. So, but we could look at the twenty-second, Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever would work for.
Uh, Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays, I usually book somewhere.
Okay.
So um, Mondays are always better for me.
Same here. That week anyway.
Tuesday or, or, I don't think. Those were the council meeting.
We don't have a council meeting on the twenty-second.
There's not a council meeting that week. It's the week before. So Monday or Tuesday, yeah. You guys have a preference on that?
I prefer Monday because I'm not available Tuesday.
Okay. Ultimately set up Monday, the twenty-first at six o'clock. Does that time work for you guys?
Sure.
You know, it's interesting is there is a fifth Tuesday in that month.
But anyway. All right, go with the twenty-first. Sounds good. All right, few updates. Um, grant funding opportunities, a correction on there. I have written down no current grant funding opportunities. There actually is uh, one that's been on the list for quite a while and just haven't got to it. That's the county RCCF funds. Um, we had spoken last year about doing a grant for Della Avenue, uh, widening in sidewalks there and had gotten, uh, verbal approval from the county. That sounded like a good project. So it's one that is on my list to continue to work on. Um, and then I wanted to provide an update on the RCO grant that we discussed at last council meeting, um, for parks development. After we had discussed, I approached RCO and told them that, you know, we're looking at applying for that grant and they informed me that that grant was only eligible for cities twenty-five thousand or larger. So wasn't listed in the notice of funding, um, but, uh, RCO didn't notify us of that. So we're not eligible for that grant. So at this point, there are I have not found any grants available for park upgrades for this year. Um, RCO will have a grant next year that, that we can look at. Um, but I will still have a full parks report here in a little bit. Um, reservoir repair, those funds were just released today. We received notification. So we'll begin the contracting process on, on getting that completed. We had bid that out back in um, October of last year. So I'm just verifying bids are still good and then we'll work on getting that awarded and scheduled. Um, that's an actual dive crew that's going to go in and do some, uh, welding underwater. So we won't have to um, shut that reservoir down. So we got sewer re lining. That one was also, uh, awarded and we, we've gotten the documents on that. So we'll be moving forward on bidding that one out as well. Tennis courts repair, we're currently bidding the fencing, resurfacing is bidding out tomorrow. So moving forward on that one. And the wayfinding signage that bid packet posted last week. So all those projects are currently on schedule and should be meeting our deadlines on those. Brief update, everything else is also moving forward slowly but surely. So any questions on public works?
Oh, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Council committee meeting reports. Any?
Um, I attended the executive committee for Benton Franklin Transit after our last meeting. It's not a whole lot there other than, uh, bringing forward stuff to the director's meeting, which happened last Thursday. And we approved our annual transportation, um, service plan as well as their title four documents or six documents, whatever they are. I can't remember the number. I'd have to look it up, but there's going to be some changes to routing. Uh, but other than that, there's nothing to report.
I don't have anything.
Nothing.
Okay, continue on to a public hearing. This is for vacation of public right of way. Uh, you want to give us some comments with that, George?
George Crest, city planner. This is a request to vacate a public right of way. Uh, the location is by and between Bryce Hillman, owner of the property located at sixteen hundred Dale Avenue. Uh, we have reviewed the request for vacation of the public right of way and found it to be in accordance with the municipal code, chapter twelve point one zero, vacation of streets, alleys, access and access easements. The city does not currently foresee any future plans to use the sixty foot wide by two hundred foot long undeveloped public right of way for public circulation. Both the city engineer and fire chief have reviewed this proposal and found this request to be in the best interest of public use and interest of the city. And then it meets the requirements of the municipal code. This public right of way is approximately twelve thousand square feet in size and lo- and is located at the north side of Dale Avenue extension, which is as you're going west on Dale Avenue. It's the first cul-de-sac as you come by. Uh, the subject parcel commences at the end of the original street which now extends beyond the cul-de-sac adjacent to the applicant's property. Mr. Hillman owns has buildings and he owns the property on the full extent of this, uh, uh, right of way. The north end of the right of way extending from Dale Avenue, butts a private lot located along the south side of Della Avenue. So even if we wanted to, to extend that road, we'd have to take that house and that property out of the way of that, of the right of way to the north. Mr. Hillman, owner of the real property at sixteen hundred Dale Avenue, entered into a right of way encroachment license agreement with the city in December of two thousand sixteen. Mr. Hillman maintains the property and currently uses the parcel as a lay down yard for large vehicles and equipment for his existing business. The existing undevelopment right of way is aligned between two parcels owned by him and, uh, the tax parcels that are listed there. Um, on January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, staff sent out notices to the surrounding property. Um, on January twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five, staff sent out notices to the surrounding property owners within three hundred feet of this proposal. Uh, again, this requires a public hearing. Uh, this is a type of application, one of the very few that do not go through the planning commission for a hearing. So it goes directly to council. Uh, the standards are listed there under title two, division five administration, uh, procedures. And chapter twelve point one zero. Uh, this is a type three land use action. The criteria that city council shall use, uh, following criteria for approval of the petition. The vacation shall not adversely affect traffic accessibility and circulation. Within the immediate area or within the city as a whole. The right of way is not contemplated or needed for future public use. No abutting property will become landlocked or access substantially impaired. Public needs shall not be adversely affected and the vacation will provide a public benefit or serve the public purpose. Um, reserve easements, there is a section in the code. And it states in vacating a street alley or public easement, the city may reserve for the city. And easements or other rights to exercise and grant any easement for public utilities and services. Pedestrian, pedestrian trail purpose. Or any other type of easement relating to city right of, of control use and manage its right of way. Uh, vacation ordinance, following the public hearing there, uh, thereon, the city. Council may authorize by ordinance the vacation of such a street alley. Access easement or any part thereof, such ordinance. May provide for the retention by the city of all easements or rights within the respected. Respect to the vacated land for construction, repair or maintenance of public utilities and service. Uh, the city, um, we are requiring. Uh, retaining a twenty foot wide easement. As part of this right of way, um. For respect, uh, for construction of maybe a potentially a water, uh, city water line. And Mr. Hillman has agreed to help with the construction cost of instilling, installing, excuse me, the public water line and the easement at a future date. There's also. Uh, the need for, uh, the irrigation district to maintain a, an easement that can be part of this too. Um, so we looked at it and we found that it, there really isn't any need for that. Right of way, it hasn't been used by the public as such, it's been used by Mr. Hillman, uh, for a number of years. Uh, financial impacts, uh, Mr. Hillman proposes to construct additional square footage, not in the. Uh, easement or right of way, but to his industrial buildings and this will allow him to. Uh, create some more additional floor space and therefore his manufacturing businesses. So. He's looking to create new jobs and tax revenue for the city. Uh, this goes through for him.
He's that, is he gonna, he's gonna keep parking his vehicles or is he gonna put, put down a blacktop or anything like that or permanent or?
Uh, it does have, uh, it's paved.
It's, it's paved, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this, uh, is part of the subdivision, industrial subdivision that was created. Uh, through the port of Benton. And for industrial uses out there and, uh, there was a, this. Public right of way was, um, looked at for possible road construction linking everything up, but it's never been used that way and.
Right, yeah.
It can't because it's blocked.
Right, I remember last, last meeting, we had the guy that owns the property behind it and, yeah, so.
And he would like to retain this house.
Yeah, he would. And I'm not in the mood for taking anybody's house.
So you say there's stipulations and then there about an easement for future water line. Is that in this particular path that says site on this? Or did we move it to the other side of his property like was discussed?
Um, I mean, when you expect to a vacation, it would have to be part of the, uh, reserving part of. The property that will otherwise be vacated. Otherwise it would be creating a new easement, but the statute allows. Uh, the city to reserve a portion of what is being vacated.
Okay, well, I understand that's what the ordinance was, but I know what the conversation with the engineer was at one point. Was just to move it to the other side of the property.
Well, then that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a reservation under the vacation.
So that's why I'm asking the question. Um, you know, he signed off on it, obviously it sounds like the engineer did. We're gonna run a water line to the middle of this guy's property? Is that what we're gonna do?
No, it still would be a public easement.
Uh huh, through the middle of his property. He owns both sides of that eas, of that roadway right now.
Right.
And that was his intention is to combine the two.
Mm-hmm.
And if we're reserving the easement in the middle, we're gonna go right through the middle of his property.
Mm-hmm.
Is that gonna cause us grief in the future? Of any type? I don't know. I'm asking the question.
No, I, I talked to Mr. Hillman and, and Alan about this and he was. Mr. Hillman's in agreement wherever we need it to go. Uh, to reserve. And a utility easement for the waterline purpose. He's, he's pretty good about it. He's not planning to build over this location anyway. He still wants to park his vehicles. And have access in between us two buildings.
As long as you guys got it in writing and it's good, I don't wanna be. The next council twenty years down the road saying, well, it's not in the system and it wasn't recorded properly.
But what, what, how that would work is the ordinance that the city would adopt would. Identify what's being vacated. And then identify what portion of that is being retained by the city for a water line or. Water, so utility easement. And that'd be in the ordinance.
Okay. Uh, I'm sure we've done that on other things and then we find out in the county records and documents that it's not done right. That's what I'm saying.
I, I, I don't know what the, the history was in other. Situations, but this is, this is a part and parcel with what the law allows. And, and as long as we do it right, we're, there shouldn't be, uh, a problem.
Okay.
The question is, do we authorize the city attorney to draft an ordinance for us to look at authorizing this?
Correct.
Which we come to council.
Right, it, it, it's not gonna be done without. A, after the, after the hearing and you make a decision, you give us direction and we'll come back with something. Ordinance. Correct. Before you make any decision though, we have to hold a public hearing. Uh, and. I don't know if there's anybody here who wants to talk to me about it.
Any, anyone here to make, uh? Want to call a public hearing?
We do.
Okay, let's call a public hearing on the proposed vacation. Of the public right of way under Benton City Municipal Code twelve point one oh, point one three zero. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment? Or call? Orders here go ahead. We'll close the public hearing, uh, on the, uh, right of way of vacation. Uh. Pursuant to Benton City Municipal Code twelve point one zero point one three zero.
I moved to approve, authorize the city attorney to draft an ordinance authorizing the vacation of the public right of way. Under Benton City Municipal Code twelve point one zero dash one thirty.
I second.
All in favor?
Sandra, oh hi.
Hi.
Rita.
And just to make sure that's, uh, retaining for this city, the twenty foot wide strip.
Add that to my motion, please.
Motion passes. Uh, continuing on. George, if you want to continue on Cameo Vista's preliminary plat approval?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, the applicant is Cameo Vista Corporation. And they're out of East Wenatchee, Washington. The site location is east of Desert Road Terrace, north of Chris Avenue and east of Fourteenth Street. Um, parcel numbers, county parcel numbers are listed. The existing zoning is medium density residential. Proposal is a preliminary plat approval to divide three existing lots totaling three point seven acres. Into thirteen new lots for residential development. Uh, the applicant is requesting the council to consider the preliminary plat. This, um, action has been heard at the planning commission. Uh, through a public hearing and was, um, voted on for recommendation of approval. Uh, going through some of the background further. Uh, utilities, uh, the street water sewer, storm drainage, street lights, irrigation and dry utilities. Shall be designed by a licensed engineer and approved by the city engineer. Uh, and utility companies with specific authority. Again, this is zoned R two. It's also zoned, uh, or stated as residential in the, or designated residential in the comprehensive plan. This has also had a SEPA checklist review by, uh, staff as well as the Department of Ecology. Um, just one item has come up, uh, that was any discovery. Of cultural or historical artifacts must be prepared and submitted to the city before any ground disturbing permits are issued. And that'll be part of the conditions of approval. Uh, way of background on this, um, proposal, uh, Cameo Vista Corporation submitted a preliminary plat. For a thirteen lot subdivision. Actually eleven lot subdivision on approximately three point seven acres. Um, back in, um. Two thousand eighteen and received approval by both the planning commission and council. Um, for eleven lot subdivision on this property. But the applicant did not come in for a final plat. And so our ordinances require. A, if they have to resubmit after a five year period and that's what happened. Uh, the owner, he had business issues after COVID and that sort of thing. So, but he's come back. Uh, redesigned it, uh, realigned the cul-de-sac to put in additional. Two lots on each cul-de-sac, so it's now, uh, instead of eleven, it's thirteen. And again, this has gone through, uh, the review. Uh, by the planning commission and now it's come forward, uh, to this spot.
And so are these that looks like they will either be, uh, thirteen single family dwellings or multifamily use units? We don't know for sure yet what they're.
Um, he hasn't, uh, stated, uh, he was talking about, uh, a mix. But predominantly single family with a couple of duplexes potentially. Uh, the lots range from seventy, seven thousand two hundred square feet to ten thousand nine hundred square feet. Uh, with, uh, overall density is four point two. Uh, in the comp plan, uh, it's allowed for resident, residential development from two to seven dwelling units per acre. And so he is kinda in the middle. Range. For density purposes. And this item does not require another public hearing as such. Because it was, uh, conducted at the planning commission.
So there's no concerns with that particular property? That we're aware of? No safety, no nothing.
It's not in a critical area. Alan's reviewed it. Um. Fire safety has reviewed it. Um, very minimal comments back on that. There was, uh, one parcel there, uh, at the intersection of Fourteenth and Chris. Um, the landowner, uh, showed up at the public hearing. Uh, she bought that parcel when it was outside in the city and it has a. Uh, septic system.
Septic in the well.
And so she is working. With the owner to potentially hook up to sewer. Uh, at a future date, so that will be good, we'll get. Septic system. Off the books. But we didn't hear anything, any negative comments at all from any of the other landowners.
Would that impact her well at all? The, the houses going in around her?
Uh, she will eventually need to hook up to city water.
Part of the plan is to try to, for all. What's going on there?
But what if she doesn't want to?
It's, yeah, her, her situation, uh, part of what we're. Looking at to do tonight, but she would like to. He's agreed to help her to hook up to the sewer system.
Sewer.
And that's the verbal agreement and also would like to encourage her to hook up. The water system and we would like to maybe like, I believe she has water rights on the well. We would like to purchase her water rights on the well, that's another, well, another item we're working on.
Did the SEPA require traffic impact, impact study?
Uh, no, but they did, uh, put an estimate, the. As stated in their application and other information. See, the project is estimated to generate between a hundred and ten and a hundred and fifty. Vehicle, new vehicle daily trips with a peak hours between four and six.
How many?
Uh, between a hundred and ten and a hundred and fifty vehicle. New weekday daily trips.
From four in the afternoon to six in the?
With the peak at that time.
Seems like an awful high. But, alright.
And are they required to have any green space in this development?
No, they will pay in lieu of fee.
I, I'll, I'll motion to approve it, George, but. Here's my concern and it's been my concern with most of our developments. Um. Making sure that they're easily accessible, um, you know. Not cul-de-sacs, but, uh, through streets of some sort. Um. And I got like a double concern here because. You got potential for. Cross traffic on thirteenth, fourteenth. Cause these align directly across from Willow Way and Kendall Road.
Mm-hmm.
And. Not so much the Kendall Crossing. But the Willow Way Crossing is on a curve. Um. And if people are coming out there, there's potential and. I, I say this from the standpoint of living up the street. I know cars are traveling through there in excess fifty miles an hour on occasion. The right time, the right set. That, that's a concern for me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't wanna see anybody injured or hurt. And, and that's part of that whole idea of, you know. Having some sort of through street that. Gives them another exit, but, um. And it's to the councilwoman's point, I, I do have concerns about her well and construction activities there.
Mm-hmm.
And potential impacts that's gonna have against him, but. Um. Otherwise, I don't see a big issue with it.
When they initially had this plat, I thought before they had it.
We, we've got a motion, so there needs to be a second before any.
I said, I, I, I would motion it, I haven't motioned it yet.
Oh.
Relax.
The original plat didn't have it like a U so that it went through before? If I remember correctly. Instead of it being two cul-de-sacs.
It's, I thought it was an L shape that went up.
I thought it was, uh, like a horse, the road went a horseshoe around the. The and the place that's there now. But they got rid of that and made the two cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, they're they're in no offense to developer, they're trying to maximize.
Right. But I thought before. It was like a horseshoe around Brittany Olson's place.
Now, there are two. On the west side of this property, there are two residences. Um, one just north of Kendall and the other one is down at Chris Avenue and Fourteenth. That's where the lady has the.
Well.
That's where the well is. Okay, so that's Ivan and Sylvia Howard.
Yes.
Okay, so the other one that's right on Fourteenth, that one does not have a well.
I don't believe so.
Got it up on the screen here.
I'm looking at it. I was just, I have it on my screen too. So which which one has the well?
The bottom one is this one.
That one, okay. So the one that I thought. I didn't realize that nobody was that old.
Before, since you don't have a motion, before there's a motion, uh, I I have a question and maybe this is for you, George, but maybe somebody else knows this too. Um, because the. Approval of a preliminary plat would set the stage for what is ultimately going to be developed. Um, in the final plat, because the final plat is clerical, do they do what was required into the. Uh, preliminary plat, yes or no, rather than let's make decisions about it. Um, I I have a question about. The certainty of the number of units that would be involved. If we have thirteen lots. Some can be single family, some can be multi-family. What does that mean? And. And maybe there's a question for for Nathan, does that impact the transportation? If we have multi-family?
Well, I think yeah, his number is for multi-family.
Thirteen multi-family?
I think it is.
So then that means like two units on each lot?
That's maximum.
Maximum.
And that's what they were, when you do a traffic study, you look at the max that the land. Can produce under the existing zoning and development. So they're looking at a worst case.
Cause if you're looking at thirteen residents and you're looking at three trips a day. Cause that's what you're gonna have in and out. You're you're gonna be, um.
Well.
Fifty, sixty?
Uh, but are we talking about thirteen residents, single family residents or?
Well, that's what I'm saying with 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 thirteen single family residents, you're you're looking at an average of three trips a day. So you got an in and out for work, right? An in and out for the spouse to work. And then you have maybe a grocery store run. So you're only looking at like forty. Thirteen times three, so thirty nine. So when they said a hundred and fifty plus, I'm looking at, well, they're thinking this is gonna be all duplexes. At three to four trips a day.
Okay, I just, I I would want it to be defined enough so that there's no confusion. Within the next five years when it comes back.
I was also curious about the peak time. Why is it four to six? What about in the morning when the roads backed up and people are leaving for work? Why is that not considered peak time?
They may have staggered.
Stagger, okay.
Times you go to work or. You got young kids.
That's that's where I would go, right? So peak time would be. Uh, bus traffic, car traffic, food from school.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking that for. So was that four to six P M or four to four A M to six P M?
Four to six P M.
See, that's. By their engineer.
Yeah, after school running, so.
So they weren't considering people leaving in the morning for work and getting their kids to school and stuff like that?
You know, we can't really say what.
What they were.
That is what they established as as estimated peak time.
I'm motion to approve preliminary plat twenty four dash zero two Cameo Vista preliminary plat application. Sandra, do I?
Read I.
Officer, I.
Yeah, briefly mentioned it in my planner's report. But again, this is. Allowing the mayor to sign the application with the Department of Ecology to apply. And this is for the Department of Ecology twenty uh, two thousand twenty five dash two thousand twenty seven Flood Control Assistance Account Program Grant. Um, what we'll be doing is developing a comprehensive flood hazard management plan, which is. Separate from the overall county natural hazards plan. We'll be looking at a couple of pieces of property. What can we do to go ahead and look at purchasing that property potentially? Uh, taking a pretty comprehensive look at uh, the needs that might arise during a flood. Uh, develop strategies for that. Uh, some of that will be discussed in more broader terms in the in the county plan, but this is looking at it directly. And it looks uh, helps sets the stage uh, if the city at a future date wants to purchase some of that land that's in the flood plan.
What's the match on the grant or is there any?
Um, we are looking at, we were recommended to look at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Uh, match uh, required is twenty five percent. Which is uh, thirty seven thousand five hundred. But this is because of the starting of the grant would be next year. Uh, there's a potential to put um. Soft costs uh, from staff related costs as part of the uh, match.
Okay.
And that'll be developed further.
So I guess. I gotta be the guy to ask this, cause I'm okay in understanding land use and such, but. We have a flood zone ordinance. Have a shoreline management plan. We have a comprehensive plan and now we're gonna have a flood what plan?
Uh, it's stated, it's a comprehensive flood hazard management plan.
And how does that all play together? I mean, do do we have any reference to that in our shoreline plan? Are we gonna have to redo that? In our flood ordinance, are we gonna have to reference this? Whi- which plans are taking precedent?
You would think that this is uh, redundant on the surface, but um, this. This grant and this procedure is required prior to this state or FEMA. Allow allocating dollars to buy land here in the city.
Yeah.
And if we don't have this, which address those specific properties.
Okay.
And those issues. And we can take a look at maybe a relocation plan for some folks that may need it. This can cover some of that and be a preliminary for the request to buy land when there's money available.
Okay. Anybody else got a question? I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash nine oh nine. Author as an heir to execute submit Washington State Department Ecology Application. For the Flood Control Assistance Account Program.
I second.
All in favor?
Sandra, do I?
Read I.
Officer, I.
Ordinance ten seventy two reclassification resulting in certain real property.
If there's questions, this was the property that was previously before the council. And uh, sent back to the city attorneys to draft an ordinance to conform to what the council voted on.
So this is just some sort of paperwork to finalize it?
Right, the the decision by the council was to change the zoning and that has to be done by an ordinance. And uh.
No, Deveru ordinance ten seventy two, an ordinance to reclassify and rezone certain real property from Ag suburban to R two. Uh, density residential and amending this Benton City zoning map and authorizing amendment of the city. To this Benton City Comprehensive Plan in accordance therewith.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandra, do I?
Read I.
Can I abstain, officer?
You can do whatever you want.
Okay. Can I abstain?
Yeah, well, I unless you have a rule that says uh, everybody has to vote, but I don't know that you have that.
Okay, officer abstain.
Uh, we have a uh, resolution two oh two point dash ten and Nathan can discuss what we have going on the matter.
Uh, this resolution is authorizing the mayor to. Sign and authorize the documents to request funding reimbursement for the wash dot projects that we currently. Uh, are working on, which would be the pedestrian crossing project and the riverfront park trail. Um, we are complete with the P E phase, getting ready to move into construction for pedestrian crossing. And uh, right away for the front park trail projects and in order to obtain our reimbursements. Requires a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the documentation.
Any questions?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash ten, delegating the mayor authority to legally bind the city. Of Benton City, the sole purpose of requesting federal reimbursement.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandra, do I?
Read I.
Officer, I.
Motion passes. Uh, we have a discussion, um. Benton City porch review. Uh, Nathan is going to discuss this. He was asked to take pictures and discuss briefly the parks. Situation, what we have and what we're looking at and what we, um, just so.
Sorry, I need to step away for a minute.
Okay. Will continue on, Mr. Attorney.
We do, you can move on.
Okay, okay, uh, the other item, um. The uh, porch board, if you read the city code. A um, form is defined as two members, so. We have two volunteers and we have one councilman that's gonna serve on it, so. We're hopefully gonna get that sorted.
We also have uh, posted on the website, call for applicants for the Parks Commission. Um, we've got some signage out on the front doors, call for applications and I've reached out to quite a few people, so we're hoping to grow that. Anyway, um, get get some more growth in that Parks Commission, but we will be starting quarterly meetings here in in the near future. Um, so as requested by council to provide a um. Comprehensive review of our parks. Um, so I've got uh. A list of what we have, what we don't have, what we need and kind of a a plan. So I'll just start alphabetical order. Right now, this park is kind of called Fourteenth Street or Disc Golf Course. That's one of the issues I believe that we get to is is park naming. But um, the needs that we have there, uh, under maintenance, this parking lot striping. We've got some fencing cleanup repairs specifically along. My mouse points here, you can see a long Fourteenth Street slash Thirteenth Street. A lot of overgrowth and fencing in pretty severe disrepair. Um, and then uh, pathway distance markers, so what was on the pathway has worn off. Uh, for capital facilities, the there were plans and there were discussions about. Extending the parking lot, putting in a non-motorized boat launch at at one point. Um, that was. When I first started uh, with Spink, so about two years ago, there were discussions about that and I know it's not a priority, but it's still. Their preliminary designs, so it's something just to keep in mind that that we have in place that we could look at for funding sometime in the future. It would require quite a bit of coordination between us, Benton County and um, Department of Fish and Wildlife. But it is something that that we could work on. Other capital facilities that we'd wanna look at in the future fencing replacement. Uh, renaming the park and signage for those for that naming and then because of the number of trees there. Doing any tree work would be capital expense. Archie Borden's and Skate Park, um, maintenance items that we need to complete, again, painting of the parking lot. The parking stops at the tennis courts are old telephone poles that are half rotted, need to be replaced. We got a drinking fountain not in operation and a lot of landscape cleanup. Um, for capital facilities, we are working on the tennis court resurfacing and fencing. And converting it into a pickleball court and there's some tree removal we'd like to do there as well sometime in the future. Uh, Botaka Park, so this is a small park inside the Botaka State's development. Um, really, the only maintenance need there is playground surfacing. It's lacking any, it's just a dirt around the the slide. And then for capital facilities, this park's in pretty good shape as well, um. Again, we we, I believe we should revisit the naming of the park and kind of get away from naming parks based on their development names. And to something more meaningful to the city. Um, and then some lighting would be nice there. There's a small basketball court, so it'd be nice to have some lighting there.
So question on that park?
Yes.
I think the landowner, when they developed that Botaka, built that. Did we ever get the deed transferred to the city on that piece of property? Do we know that?
I I've never checked, so I don't.
I I would ask that question because of how it was constructed.
Sure.
It would be hard, he's dead.
We can check the county records, so.
Yeah. I'll take a look. I don't know. I've never looked into that, so I'll verify ownership of that and. Backtrack and see if if we need to, what what we would need to do there. Uh, moving on Legion Park, one of our larger parks. Um, this park's actually in pretty good shape as well. We do have some playground surfacing and just needs to be redistributed, you know, we've got low areas and and. And uh, thick areas. We've got a couple benches where the vinyl's scraping off and needs to be replaced. And then um, extensive trees there that require tree trimming and and thinning. Nothing is hazard at this point, you know, anything broken or 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 hanging, but uh. Based on, I'll just say as a caveat, the amount of parks we have and trees. We should have a budget line item annually for just tree trimming to just continue to maintain it.
And your question that Botaka or or is owned by the city?
Oh, you checked it?
Yeah.
Great, awesome. Thank you, guys. So yes, we do own it.
I've never researched it, but based on how it was created, I was curious.
Yes.
So going back to the other one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, two complaints I get from people up there, there was no parking. And the fact that there's a porta potty, not a bathroom set that. People aren't walking out towards residential from the porta potty type thing.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what solutions we can come up with for those two items.
I think it's big enough in that one side that we could take a portion of it and turn it into a parking lot.
Or some angled parking, just right on that end, yeah.
I think angled parking along. It does not care in there.
Jill.
Hill.
Jill.
Jill, along Jill would probably be, and and then on the backside as well, I don't remember what street that is.
Thirteen.
Still learning my streets here, sorry, but angle parking along both those sides would give us quite a bit. And there's a lot of room there, there's plenty of space to do that. So, um, I'll make a note of that and kind of add it to our capital facilities plan.
Okay.
Look at a restroom and, uh, develop some parking there, some street side parking. Uh, Lloyd Carnahan Park, formerly City Park. Um, maintenance there, we've got a playground structure that's in disrepair, needs to be repaired. And a drinking fountain that's not operational. So those are, again, are just, uh, trying to fix what we've got. Under capital facilities, I think we need to look at some additional lighting around that park, around the community center specifically. Um, some some more signage, we've got signage on the one corner, but that part kind of extends over, um. You know, basically one city block, so, and we've got one sign on the east end. The east side, um, kind of the high side of it, that's still titled City Park and it's vandalized. So it'd be nice to to update that. And then we've got a stage here that is, uh, starting to deteriorate as well, when you look at a more. Long-term solution for a surface repair, probably some sort of epoxy coating, which I don't have any prices on that at this point, but it's something that I'm going to be looking into.
So. That is a good idea. Something that's been brought up to my attention on that particular stage is the back half where the trees are. That would probably need some sort of railing. Due to the heights of the drop off the backside.
Okay.
We we have a, uh. Those are invited, so we have some of them are sort of the, look like they are diseased.
Mm-hmm.
And it's critical to have the shade, so. I don't know whether it's an overhead or a wall in the back or.
Well, honestly, I I think long long term, if we're looking at a capital facilities plan, would be to put in a shade structure. Over that stage would be the best, would be the best, um, bet. And then you're not dealing with tree management, um, the only thing you have there, depending on the type of structure you put, if it's a. Tarped type structure, just removing the tarps during the winter, so it's not damaged, uh, through the snow. Use a lot of those in my past life, um, and they're very versatile, those tarps last a long time, they're pretty thick, so. Um, I I would recommend going that route, then you're not dealing with trees and and you could even incorporate, I think, a back railing into the shade structure as well. What's that?
Like lighting?
Yes, you can add layers to it as well, I mean, there's there's quite a few options there. It all costs money, but those are things to look into.
Well. This park in particular is integral to the city.
Mm-hmm.
This is the park of everything that happens here.
Right.
Um, Benton City Days, the winter festival thing that they had.
Fourth.
Yeah, July fourth. Um. This needs to function well and be safe for all the participants and everything. I think little Benton City Days, Miss Benton City Days has been on that stage for the last forty-five years that I've lived here. So.
Okay. Definitely stuff we'll look into, what one one dilemma we face and and I I don't have the solution, but you know, right now, we lock the restrooms up just because of vandalism. Things that happen there and and. You know, it's my vision that we don't have to do that, that we can get to a place where the restrooms are in use, um, they're they're maintained. So, um.
Isn't it close? Is it not only open dawn to dusk?
They're closed permanently at this point.
Oh, not even during the day, oh?
No, we've got a porta potty there because of the vandalism that we've been facing there at that park.
Okay.
We ended up just closing them permanently.
Okay.
One of the major vandalizers actually is no longer in town. The same.
The advantages of a small town.
You know, he sometimes you can't prove.
Yeah, right.
Um, I know, so this this goes to all our parks, um. I I know that we discussed at some point, maybe a, um. Solar powered camera for the daytime.
Hmm.
Um. That could kind of pan through the park. And look for those types of things. I don't know what that availability is. If there's any grant funding for that sort of thing.
You know, there's thousands of grants out there, it's finding what's available, I know, I can just tell you. Our our normal parks grant is R C O, and there's no grants open until next year. That that we're eligible for, so that's something that we could look into in the future there. If there's other options, you know, it's something I can investigate, possibly some sort of security type grant. Um, something like that. But I, you know, as I'm going, I'll kind of show you my plan and and my my vision for for parks and and for our city. Um. But I'll just finish the review and then kind of get into that.
Okay.
Last few parks here is Mountain View. Um, again, essentially, that's a grass field in the middle of development, and it's been named after the development that's there. The only maintenance needed, because there's really nothing there but grass, it just needs some fertilizing and overseeding, just to make sure that grass goes in good. Um, when I was with Spink, we did have future plans for play play structure, a restroom, um. Uh, some soccer fields, kind of all of that in that park, it's just a question of is is that a park worth? Putting that much investment in, when we, you know, when it's really only used by that neighborhood. And and the housing in that area where, you know, we have other other parks that are more central to the city. I would I would say specifically your boat launch, your city park, Lloyd Carnahan Park and Legion. That would make more sense to put the investment in those parks that are more central to the city. But, you know. It is something we consider and and maybe it's a ten-year plan, or, yeah, we do want to do it at some point, but when we get these other priorities done. So that that's kind of my two cents, but essentially, we do have. An initial design for this park to put in restrooms, play structures, uh, and some sports fields, double soccer fields. Right now, all we have is fencing.
That's a big plus.
Yes. Um, Rick, uh, Rabble Park, recreational boat launch park. Uh, to me, this is a, you know, you mentioned City Park, Lloyd Carnahan Park is kind of central to the city. To me, this is another trophy park because it's right at the entrance of the city, and it's important to keep this one looking, looking nice, looking maintained. Um, the needs there, we've also got a drinking fountain that's not operational. There's just branches and trimming that needs to be done, and the small little paved parking area for handicap is, uh, it needs to be painted as well. Um, for capital facilities, we would like to develop the space in between, um, the road and the parking lot. Our actual grass park area, so we're looking into costs to put in irrigation there and see if it's something that we can budget out of our parks budget for the year. Just to make that, you know, clean up that area, we've got some tree tree, uh, stumps that were all cut down, working on. Getting those removed here within, by the by the end of this month, and get that area cleaned up, but. We'd like to make that kind of a usable grass area or in that space. And then find, well, I'm just finally, I don't remember, Riverfront Park, we do have a sign there. Um. And we have an access road in. So I did verify with R C O that this part does need to be accessible by the end of twenty twenty-six. For our agreement, our purchase agreement. Right now, we have a dirt road kind of going in. Um, I think if we budget just some gravel and with our equipment that we have, we can make a feasible access road to meet the demand. Of calling it a park. We've got a sign, you know, if we get an access road in there, um, at that point, it at least meets that qualification, so we'll be off the hook with. Um, R C O and showing that it is a park, um, but. It's one of those that we do want to look at, uh, future development, we've got a, we've got a plan in place, Akana. They're they're kind of sitting on hold, but we do have, um, a task order with them to finalize development, which includes a restroom. Um, ADA parking, incorporation of a a trail, even an event center with a gazebo, those things are all part of the design that we do have in place. Um, and are, again, not really named yet, but Splash Parks, uh, slash Blacktop Park. We've got that application in for a splash pad there, so, you know, that goes through. We know what we're going to be doing, uh, maintenance there, it'd be nice to put a couple shade trees in, because there's nothing. And some more, uh, development of the grass, just make sure it comes in well. Uh, so a few other things, mentioned the Parks Commission, uh. Be nice to get that moving soon, some priorities that I, uh, I have listed for the Parks Commission would be naming of the parks. And with that, some design on signage and and putting together a budget for signs. And then, uh, projection, uh, projections and a funding plan for capital improvements, so putting together a a ten-year plan. This year, this is what we want to apply for, and this is what we want to do. Uh, in two years, this is, you know, three years, but to put a plan together for our parks, obviously, uh, the council's review and approval, of course, but. Um, have a committee, not just city staff, but, um, you know, rounded group that can provide those recommendations. So we can prioritize what we want to go for, what we want to, what what we what we deem important as a city. And then currently, um, this is kind of the plan that I put together based on the budget we have for this year. So right now, we've got about thirty thousand dollars, a little over that, in a budget. Um. With the purchase of the tractor, we're we're taking that monthly payments. Out of that budget, that's how we're paying for our our tractor, so it takes about eight thousand now, so that leaves us a balance of about twenty-three. With that, my goal this year is just to kind of get everything back up to. Speak, get everything that we have actually working, our infrastructure. Get things safe, get things looking, um, better and operational, so that's fixing the drinking fountains, replacing parking stops. Painting our 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 parking lots, um, some tree trimming. Uh, and clearing, the 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 only real improvement that I've I've budgeted for this year is putting in that irrigation system. At the boat launch park to make that area clean and nice looking, um, you know, we've. Honestly, only got about three thousand for that, and then budgeted three thousand for some gravel for Riverfront Park to to start an access road. Hopefully, if we can get enough gravel to kind of get in, next year, we can budget another three to five thousand and maybe finish off some gravel. But based on the funding we have available at this point, you know, knock on wood, if more comes in, more park development fees come in. Uh, we can, we can look at additional things, but. My goal this year is just to get things looking nicer what we already have. Um, not look at any major investments, next year, we can look at R C O and applying for some funds, um, whether that be Riverfront Park. Or, which is probably our best bet, but, uh, at that point, we can look at requesting some funding for for some future park development. And then I just put some future considerations, things we've discussed, Fourteenth Street, expanding the parking lot, boat launch. Putting in a permanent disc golf course, not not just temporary, Archie Borden, we're already working on the pickleball ball conversion there. Um. Uh, Legion Park, I'll add to that list, restrooms and, um, uh, parking, street side parking. Lloyd Carnahan Park, it'd be nice to get a nicer, bigger play structure there, something updated. Um, Mountain View, again, it's just a grass area, our boat launch park, we're limited on what we can do because it's fish wildlife land, but they've given us approval to. Make that area park and look at possibly paving that as well, uh, for some future plan. And then Riverfront Park. Um, this kind of hinges on the bridge and how much we want to do, but. The gazebo event center, some public restrooms, an actual street in there with parking. And then hopefully with that splash park, again, we get that funding approved and can move forward with that. Um. Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
I think it's a good step forward to get some of the stuff, um, maintained or back up and running, I guess. Something I think is important when people swing by our parks and have water fountains that are there that are actually functional and picnic tables that will. Stop them.
I I agree, and that's kind of why I chose what I did.
I was gonna say with the Carnahan Park, that when we have people come in from out of Benton City too, that's where they're at, so that I think we really need to. Pay attention to, and I just have one request when looking at equipment for that park to upgrade stuff. I would hope that we would consider looking at equipment that is wheelchair accessible as well. I know that is going to cost a little bit more, but having stuff available for kids with special needs. Is always welcomed and very much appreciated.
Most of the equipment these days, that is a a standard requirement for playground equipment. Um, I used to be a certified playground safety inspector, so I've got a lot of experience with that and and. You rarely can find anything nowadays that does not comply with those, it's got the correct landing sizes and the correct transitions between landings.
And even the swings and stuff that can.
Yeah, so it'll have those options, but obviously, we will take that in consideration.
Okay.
Um. Uh, I kind of, I I hear you loud and clear that that that's our center park, that's our central park and 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 so it should be something we look at prioritizing. Um. For upgrades.
I have a question more procedurally, sorry, Dan, I'm gonna aim it at you. Uh, is there any, and I'm not sure who's on the Parks Parks Commission, did I hear the, one of the council members is sitting on that? Okay, is there any conflict of interest with him bringing something forward or?
A councilor.
Oh.
Has to be on that commission.
Gotcha.
But to answer your question, it's it's not an uncommon thing.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so there's in in our administrative code, there's five. Um. Branches that a council member is supposed to be on, sitting on, one is a finance, I believe. There's parks, somebody Public Works. And.
I just wanted to make sure there was no conflict there.
Yeah, we we we've got it covered in administrative code.
And I'm looking forward to getting these meetings kicked off, so you'll probably see an invite in the near future on those.
Just remember our workdays.
So do I, so I don't know how we're gonna make that happen.
Yeah.
I was hoping that Bill.
Can I say that again? No.
As the tester of the playground.
I was gonna say, I I volunteer to be the first person to test out the playground equipment and the splash pad.
All right, all right, I've got that in writing.
Okay.
Speedo's mandatory.
No. That it needs to, it's family friendly.
Just making sure that image hasn't left yet.
Well, with this, uh, that concludes my presentation, we will, uh, continue as as we planned and, uh, keep you updated, so.
Thank you.
Any other additional business, uh, you want to discuss or adjourn and so for executive session?
And I'm gonna, before you go into executive session, I want to clarify one thing that may be easily misunderstood. The executive session, uh, which is under R C W forty-two thirty-one ten. One C is, uh, to consider the the sale or purchase of property. Where public discussion could affect the the price, the other item. Is in closed session afterwards, it's under R C W forty-two thirty-one forty, is not part of the meeting. So you'd go through the executive session after the meeting is concluded, then you can go into this closed session. Which is, does not have to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, no records, no nothing.
Okay, okay, well, thank you for all that, understood, we're going to. Adjourn right now, way to the council meeting on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
What about the resolution for the hearing zone?
That was in.
Oh.
Non-controversial.
Okay.
Non-controversial issues.
Right.
Fantastic.
That was in the consent agenda. Okay, thank you for saying.
In in estimated time?
Uh, we're going to come back here at, uh. Thirty-five after the hour and figure, figure, uh. Fifteen minutes, so we adjourn the executive session at ten minutes to the top of the hour. Uh, and so we're gonna like a five minute break for a little break, have water or whatever.
You're gonna be here until all this is done.
Going back to order, that's a city council meeting, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Any additional items of business need to be discussed or do we vote to adjourn?
Vote to adjourn.
I second. I second.
All in favor?
Sandra, do I?
Rita.
Officer, I.
City Council Meeting, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, hereby adjourned, okay, continuing on.